We will go ahead and get started. Thank you for joining us. I think we might have a few more joining. Along the way, but for those of you who are here, we appreciate you being here. I am going to go ahead and let everybody kind of unmute and say who they are so that we know who is with us tonight. And then we will get started on the meeting. So I'm Katrina Cowan, the Director of Equity Diversity and Inclusion, and I also work with family and community engagements.
Next.
Uh, Roberto Soto, um, coordinator of family engagement and and no ticker for tonight because I'm already on it right now.
Albert Tippman, uh, NAIPAC Chair.
Uh, Kaya Silva, Family and Community liaison.
Jessica Maria Lina. See them.
Go Jessica.
Jessica Hildebrand, um, Teacher Representative.
Maria Lina, Parent and Community Member.
Uh, Mackenzie Lockhart from Sacramento Native American Health Center, snack.
Perfect. Thank you so much for joining us. So, um, just to kind of go over for tonight, and now I can't. Get my, there we go, um. Our activities that we're gonna do for tonight, we just completed our welcome. We'll start with a land acknowledgement. And then we're gonna talk about our, we're gonna have a program overview that's very brief, and then we're gonna talk about planning for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, and the goal is to get input. Albert, are you able to lead us in a land acknowledgement?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So, um, welcome everyone. Glad you all could make it. I have a prepared land acknowledgement that my relatives at the Wilton Rancheria. Wilton, Nissen, and Mewuk have prepared. Since the beginning of time as we know it, our ancestors have occupied the great Sacramento River Systems. The Mewuk ancestral tribes, the Amachumne, Kosumne, Hopumne, and Maklumne to the south. The Nissenon ancestral tribes, the Esto, Notamuse, Nissim, and Pabuanon to the north. Is this land, the land that you stand on today, and the ancestors of the tribe once flourished? With an opulent amount of natural resources. And the sky filled with our winged relatives, the water filled with the salmon, and abundance of other aquatic life. Gratitude is given to those who came before us. We recognize the treatment through colonialism and attempted genocide of our forbears. It was their persistence, tenacity, and resilience. That these descendants of those first people inhabited this land are still here today and thriving. Wilton Rancheria is the only federally recognized tribe in Sacramento County. The descendants of the first people of this land welcome you. We ask you, acknowledge and respect our culture, our people, and all our lifeways. We will continue to work together. For the recognition and betterment of the well-being of our communities in all generations, past, present, and future. Oh, thank you.
Thank you, Albert. So we wanted just to give everyone here, this is our NAIPAC meeting for, um, the month of April, but it is also our public hearing. Which is an opportunity for really anyone from our community, our parent group, student group. Or staff group to provide input into the program. So we weren't sure who was gonna show up. What that would look like, so we wanted to make sure we had an overview of the program and talk about just a brief history of the program. Um, what we have done so far, um, share a little bit about funding and then talk about. What some of the things are for next year, and then we can get into, um, some of our planning for upcoming events to finalize this school year. So we're gonna talk a little bit about the program history. The program began in, um, twenty-twenty-one, really, which was. Well before I came on board with a group of amazing people, um, that. Really, um, both from the community, Jessica is a teacher really advocating for the program, parents like Maria Lina. Who were advocating for the program, um, working with some TRUSD staff to talk about formation of the program. Getting an active program in place and getting funding for that program in place and what that would look like. In the fall of twenty-twenty, TRSD hosted its first. Fall gathering and then in spring of twenty, sorry, that was fall of twenty-twenty-one, right, Alberto? Fall of twenty-twenty-one, first. Fall gathering?
Yeah, that was fall of twenty-twenty-one.
And then, um, in the spring. Of that year was actually when the program officially had an APAC and bylaws put into place. So our, our goal with the fall gathering this year was really to get, um, interest and a list of interest in. Our program to see if we could get a board to adopt and to apply for, um, or. Be appointed to positions in order for us to be able to pass bylaws and have a strong program in place. Um, so those bylaws were adopted in the spring of twenty-twenty-one, and then the program officially began, even though there had been. A lot of planning before that, and really the program was already kicked off. That was kind of the official beginning to the program. Once we had that set of bylaws in place and had a board. So we have kind of two general program goals. There's a lot of individual goals that go into each one of these. But overall, the two big focuses of the program are academic and cultural. So improving the academic success of Native American or Alaskan native students in our district. Um, and then also the cultural component, which is really to be able to provide opportunities for students and families to participate in culturally relevant programs and activities. That recognize and value the importance of Native American culture. And so. We come at this kind of both perspectives in terms of, um, ensuring that students. Have the ability to share in practices within their culture. Um, celebrate those practices and the history and the contributions that have been made. And then also how are we supporting our students academically to ensure that they are successful in school? Are there any questions on those program goals or, or kind of the history of the program? So we wanted to share some data, um, just to have some kind of data to, to be able to. Kind of focus things around in terms of when we're talking about this program and who are the students and families that we're serving, so. We have it identified into separate cohorts. And Alberto, if I'm skipping anything, please jump in. But we kind of, the data that was pulled, was pulled in support, our, our. Data and, and research department in our IT department pulled this information for us. Um, some areas to highlight that we identified are graduation rates, dropout rates, A through G, suspension, chronic absenteeism, and. And participation in advanced placement enrollment and concurrent enrollment. For those who are not aware of concurrent enrollment. Is students who are taking college classes while in high school. We have it broken down into two parts. Two different numbers, and you're gonna see some slight variations between the numbers. And so without kind of going into too much detail. We currently have, um. About eleven hundred and eighty students in our districts who on the enrollment packet identify as Native American. Or Alaskan natives, though that's the way that it's identified there. That is the percentage rate you're going to see on the right. Um. The left column, when you see it here, is really students reported. So. We are required to report data a certain way to the state, but it doesn't capture all of our students within that group. So that's why we wanted to show it to you, because if you look on any data websites for the state, Data Quest or any of the other dashboard. You're gonna see some slightly different numbers, but we feel it's really important to capture all of our students. And look at numbers holistically in terms of who's identified when they register as Native American or Alaskan native on those enrollment packets. So the graduation rate of the whole group, so of those students who are identified last year as seniors, we had an eighty-seven point five percent graduation rate. For our, um, Native Indian students. Our dropout rate for the whole group was ten point four percent. A through G is an indicator that is used to identify students that graduate from college. Having met all the requirements for UC and Cal State admission. And that is nineteen percent for that whole group of students. And then suspension rates. So when you look at all of our students, and this is something to be really proud of. Um, in terms of data is that when you look at all of the students identified, around eleven hundred and eighty students, as I mentioned last year, and about the same this year. We have only two point one percent. Um, identified as having been suspended, which is much lower than some of the other, um, student populations. That we are seeing as we monitor this data. Chronic absenteeism. Chronic absenteeism is, um, students who have missed a certain percentage of school. And so that number is very high, and I think that's something that as. A NAIPAC group, we probably wanna look at in terms of how we're supporting students and families with attendance. Advanced placement courses are only offered at the high school, so this represents students only at the high school level, and that's twenty-six students were enrolled. In twenty-one, twenty-two, and concurrent enrollment, we had only six students enrolled. Who identified as Native American or Alaskan Indian on those enrollment packets again. Any questions about the data or data you would like to see in the future, clarification? Concerns?
Now, is this, is this data collected by the district?
It is. So there's two ways, so there's two ways data can be collected. Um. The state requires us to only, we, we report certain students to the state, and the way that that works is on the enrollment packets. Every family gets, they identify, there's a one question that comes first on the enrollment packet demographic section that says, are you Hispanic? If the families answer yes, then what's reported to the state counts them as Hispanic. And the data becomes Hispanic. They aren't counted in data that's reported to the state as native students. If they mark no. Then, then they identify as Alaskan, um, as Native American or Alaskan native. Then that's different, but right now currently, just to kind of give you an idea, we have about eleven hundred and eighty-five students in our district to identify on that. Enrollment survey as Alaskan native, um, Alas- American, Native American or Alaskan Indian is the way that it's phrased on there. But what this, we have to report to the state is only those that identify as that who have marked no. Who have marked no. To the Hispanic section on the enrollment packet. So if you look at Data Quest, which is the state website. It shows that Twin Rivers in the previous year had about a hundred and fifty-three Native American students. That's why when we requested this data, we requested the percentages based on both sets of numbers. So our, our IT department, our Director of Assessment and Accountability pulled this for us. Um, using queries based on those enrollment numbers so that we would see. Both the percentages on the left are the ones, the one that say students reported as American Indian or Alaskan native. Those are students reported to the state. Those percentages are things that are required to report to the state, and those are reported to the state. On the right is the percentages based on that whole number of students, which is more like eleven hundred and eighty-five. So in some cases, the numbers are very similar, the percentages are the numbers, and in some cases, there's some differences, like the suspension rate, you can see the difference.
Yeah, that, that was, um, what stood out for me, um, was the suspension rates. Um, and you know, that's a historic flaw.
Yes.
In, in reporting, um. Maybe it's because we're, uh, marginalized in like census and overall population. Um, but it is, and especially in California, there, there, you know. There's a huge population, it's diverse where we are, Latino and tribal. How do we fix that?
That's a really good question, Albert. This is something for me from an equity standpoint, that I'm always asking for different sets of numbers, and. But then people are gonna get confused because they're gonna look at a website, they're gonna see a different pot of numbers, and it's not just our native students. This impacts. All of our students. So if we have African-American students, or if we have Asian students who mark yes to the Hispanic, they're counted in the Hispanic population. So within our department, within our equity plan, we've really tried to capture. Student groups for what they're self-identifying as, whether they click that yes or no. Um, because we feel it's important to look at holistic numbers in terms of who's self-identifying, because it really can change. The information we're getting back, and if we're using data to, to make decisions, it's important that we have the big picture.
It is, and, and I, I think I shared with you in the last meeting that I have been working with an, uh, an organization called Organizing Roots. And that is one of the, um, one of their goals is to address dropout rates, suspension rates, graduation rates, but. They, um, they, they have a list of, uh, school districts. And, uh, their, their data, of course, I'm sure they're collecting it in the way that they're collecting it. Uh, suggests a higher number for Twin Rivers. But nonetheless, I mean, nine percent, that's still. You know, two percent is great.
Right. Yep. So that's kind of in terms of data. So this is something that I think we keep advocating for, and from our perspective, that there's data that this group wants to see. We're gonna try and make sure you get the data. We want to present to you what's also given to the state, because we don't want somebody to get confused when they look at. A state website and say, why was the number I given different, right? Not to create confusion, but we also want to recognize that there's this whole other group of students. We don't have a hundred and fifty-three students in our district to identify as Native American. We have eleven hundred and eighty-five. Christina.
Uh, hi, thank you for this discrepancy and the, not discrepancy, the difference in the, in the, um, two different data sets you have here. I think it's really helpful. Um, I think next year would be cool to see. Um, if we're able, are we able, are they flagging them in like the Aries system, or I don't know if it's Aries or what the, the. System is that Twin Rivers uses to track students, because we flag our, um, Title VI students in infinite campus, so we pull. Their data, the, for our public hearing too. So we compare the students enrolled and that are receiving services. With those that identify, and then the additional, like what you have, the all, who's all students who's race selection includes American and Alaska native. Um, and sometimes we're able to see like that the work that's happening is working, you know, for those students that are enrolled and actively participating in the program. Um, that's always helpful to see. It'd be next year, because I think this, this year was the first student that's receiving tutoring and stuff, so next year. It'd be cool to see that data specifically for those students, um, to have a five oh six score. I know it'll be different because if there's ten or less in some categories, we can't report it, can't share that out. Um, and like our, so our SPECT scores, we actually just, like any, we, um. Took the average of all of, like, all students who scored one, all scored, all students who scored two, all who scored three, all who scored a four. Just so we could see who was meeting standards, who was almost there, who met the standards and who exceeded it, not individuals, but just the percentages. Um, that's, that's helpful information to be able to see.
And we absolutely, actually you bring up SPECT score, so when that information becomes available for this year, we can pull that also. And yes, we can do a multi-year comparison, um. To see it right now, currently on our Aries system, which is our student information system that we have in the district, we. We can identify, that's how I run, that's how I run queries, that's how Eddie Alberto creates groups to send information to. So we're pulling that entire group for that. Our dashboard, which is really like the consolidated data that the district currently collects, does not collect it separate. They collect the data the state is requesting and the required components.
I know, that's always.
Yeah.
I always, I'm always, I don't totally agree with it, somewhere, but that doesn't encompass all the students who are actively like reaching out and acquiring services, you know? So that's, I don't know, but.
And we can create groups, so one of the things that we are looking to do next year is any student who participates in tutoring and creating a group, so we can see. Um, what are the other components for us with tutoring? We can talk about this probably more in-depth at another time when we gather that data. That elementary grades in our district are kept a little separate. So it's more difficult. We have to pull the individual report cards for students. We don't get data for high school. I can pull the DNF rates, I can look at pass rates, I can look at all of that. But for elementary, it becomes a little bit more of a challenge. I also want to point out with this data that when we talk about cohorts. Graduation cohort, this is not one year. So this is not a student who starts the. Senior year in our district and ends senior year in our district. This percentage for graduation cohort and the dropout cohort rate. Is students who start in our district as ninth grade. Um, it's a four-year cohort. So if we have a student drop out and they don't enroll anywhere else, they become our district's dropouts. Um, if they graduate with us, that's a four, it's a four-year cohort. So that's how the state collects that information as well. It's not from beginning to senior to the end. Um, Maria Lina, I see your hand in the, I think Christina has her hand up again after that.
Um, okay, so I, I just wanted some clarification. So I got the part where if they drop out, they're still counted as the cohort if they don't enroll anywhere. But if, because I, what I heard was, once your student starts ninth grade somewhere, that's who's responsible for them to complete high school. Um, so then if a child moved districts, would they still be included in your cohort if they did graduate?
No. No. Somewhere else, they become part of that cohort.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Good question. Alright, so I'm gonna move to the next slide so that we can, um. Look at the next, next piece.
One more, one more question, I'm sorry.
Go for it, you're good, you're good.
I think I know the answer, but I want to ask. Of those, um, students that identified, um, native, are those five oh six forms or just general self-identified?
General self-identified. Alberto, can you, because you have the most recent numbers, can you say how many current five oh six forms we have on file?
Uh, we have about seventy, seventy, seventy students. Well, originally we had. Collected around eighty plus, but then when I created the last group, we had about seventy who were active. Um, and in this case, then the thing, the, the students who ran the query were about a thousand. Is that correct, Maddie? Uh, Katrina?
And that we have eleven hundred and eighty-two, I'm gonna say, that are identified in Aries right now, yeah.
Thank you.
So, yes, so we definitely, one of the areas is we know that not all of our students that identify as. Um, native students are actually, they, they may not have tribal affiliation with a five oh six form, but for those that do, we definitely want to capture that. And we'll talk about why that's important also. Um. So the Native American Parent Advisory Committee, which is this group that is here tonight. Um, we have some individuals, so in our bylaws, we have some specific representatives that are identified. We have a teachers or counselor reps. Um, Jessica is, is our teacher rep for the group. We, um, are able to have high school students, um, that are members who have an eligible five oh six form. On file, and then we can also, as part of our NAIPAC, have tribal representatives. Um, for those who are on Indian lands located within fifty miles of any school that this district would encompass. And so, and, um, that tribes that specifically have students with five oh six forms that are in our district. And then parents and family members, so guardians, grandparents, foster parents. Um, really any family member, um, of Indian children within the district. Are also welcome to be part of NAIPAC. Our NAIPAC meetings are open meetings, so even for individuals who may not have five oh six forms. We welcome participation in the meetings, and your inputs and participation is always valued. So don't feel like you have to have a five oh six form in order to participate, but in order to hold one of those positions that are identified here, you would have to have a five oh six form. But we have members currently on our NAIPAC who do not, and they are some of our consistent valuable participants. And who have really helped this gruber, program grow and sustain over the last few years, so. We welcome participation from anyone. We do have some. Chairs, um, so we have Albert who's on here right now. And he is our, um, NAIPAC Chair, and I'm gonna let him speak during this section and address the group as well. And then Christina Prairie Chicken, who's also on here, who I didn't get a picture of, um, but she is our Vice Chair. And then we have an open position currently, which is our secretary position, and I've identified here in our bylaws what it says. Their roles and responsibilities are, um, as members of the chairs for NAIPAC. Um, Albert or Christina, do you wanna, um. Kind of introduce yourselves more, say some things about NAIPAC and. Your roles?
Go ahead, Kristin, do you want to share? I talk too much.
Uh, sure. I, sorry, everyone, I signed on a tad bit late. I'm in, um, I'm in Palo Alto. My, my nephew is here from South Dakota for his admit weekend at Stanford, so. I'm with my family, helping them get adjusted here, so. Um, thank you for letting me join, and, uh, Christina Prairie Chicken Narvus, I'm Ola Lakota. Uh, I guess I'm, I'm the Vice Chairperson, um, just thank you to. To Albert, Jessica, Maria, um, Maria Lina, and all of the staff over at Twin Rivers. I feel like I, I haven't been as active as I wanted to this year. Um, I'm, uh, managing the, the mom role and work role and everything else too, so. Um, yeah, I, I just really, really admire the work. It feels like Twin Rivers just took off. And I was just in a meeting recently where people were saying they were just so impressed with Twin Rivers and all, all the work that they've been doing and how many, um. Things that you've already been able to implement in the community, and I think it's really awesome. And then even just hearing that we have seventy students with a five oh six form, and that's just with the first full year functioning. And we get to have, like, I know I filled out my voice forms last year, and when my son is in kindergarten, that's gonna be with him for the next twelve years. You know, all the way up to graduates and kindergarten as a twelfth grader. Um, so that's really, really excellent work, so just thank you all for that, and that's all I have right now.
Yeah, thank you, Christina. Um, Albert Tippman, Nissen on Me, what might do, uh, Pet River Nation. I am the Board Chair for the NAIPAC, Native American Parent Advisory Committee. I feel blessed and honored that I get to sit in this circle with all of you. Um, I'm an alumni from the district and, um. And actually went to elementary, I mean, middle school, when we used to call it junior high. At Del Paso Junior High School, which is now Grant West. Um, and so, um, I grew up out here not realizing we didn't have an Indian education program. And we had Cindy Lamar, and we had the other school districts that offered that. And they, oh, they opened that up for all of us, so we were, you know, we would benefit from those programs. But, um, when my daughter, uh, transferred from Elk Grove to Realinda and her senior year. Yeah, I was asking, hey, where's the Indian, because we had Indian Ed out there, right? So I was asking, you know, for the Indian Ed program, and no one. Knew the principal, they had no idea, and I, and I thought, oh, we gotta do something about that. And I talked to Cindy, and she said, well, you gotta talk to Jessica Hildebrand. So we kind of went back and forth in messages for a while, and, and, um, you know, long story short, here we are. It's a, it's a beautiful thing to witness, um, the Indian Education Program. And, and all the duties you outlined there, I don't think I have accomplished one of those, so I got some work to do.
I don't think it's an all-encompassing list. We may need to look at the bylaws again, because you do a lot of other things that aren't on here.
So I wanna, I wanna thank you, Katrina, and Eddie Berto, and Jessica from the district side, um. Really, really want to just offer gratitude, because you all have really gone above and beyond what some of the other districts have, have. You know, have had to overcome over the decades, and so it's just really refreshing that, um. You know, we have some district relatives that are actually invested in, in making things happen, so thank you.
No, thank you. We appreciate, um, without this group here, we would not have an APAC. And so we wouldn't have bylaws, and it would limit the things we could do within the program. Um, and so it's really important, and this group is. Um, and so it's really important and this group is worked very hard. And so thank you to all of you. Um, bylaws, I put a link here and I shared this presentation in. The chat and I can repost it for those of you who may have jumped on a little late so that you can look at our bylaws as well. And have access to them to see what they look like, but I don't want to take too much time to go over them now. How are we funded? So we are funded through. Um, a Title VI formula grants. Um, and Eddie Berto, do you want to jump on and talk a little bit about the, the money and the numbers and where we're at in the process?
Yes. So at, at this point, we are in the process to complete, um, what is phase two of the Title VI formula grant. I looked at the token, or there's a survey that's sent from the Office of Indian Education and look. That we had. Around twenty thousand dollars for the following school year. Uh, there's going to have to be a bit of an adjustment because it was taking account the eighty-three students we had, who had originally submitted, but we all. Need to revise that student count. Um, but as steadily has grown over time, obviously, as you can see from the, the chart right there within the four years. Uh, phase one was when we sent notifications out to the families. Uh, regarding the program itself and then the, obviously the Indian certification form. That we notify families via parent square and, and through messages and text messages. And so this funding will allow the opportunity for us to provide. You know, dedicated Title VI funds for our students who identify as American Indian Alaska Native. In addition, the district has been providing matching funds, utilizing Title IV funds. Uh, to supplement or provide additional services. In this case, students who, let's say, would. Have not submitted a five oh six form can participate in these programs. And in this case, you know, it's easily accessible for students to participate in these type of events. And sort of those are just what we have so far at this moment. Um, the deadline to submit. The phase two is May twelfth. And part of the requirements, as, as you can see today, is with the annual hearing and notification of the program itself. As far as then, you know. Purposeful communication with our local tribes. Um, gathering feedback when it comes to the program itself. Uh, that will help as far as gathering your soliciting information for, to submit the application by the May twelfth deadline.
Thank you. Any questions on the funding or the phase two that we're in right now for recertification for next year?
I, I do want to say that this is, uh, in our case, since we're, we went for the multi-year application process, this is the year three of a four-year application. Um, that, uh, we are, I guess, resumé for next year.
Thank you. Alright, so some of the.
I just want to offer gratitude again to Hedy Berto for. You know, your, you know, your administration of the funding. Just want to say thank you.
For sure. He takes good care of it. Make sure he gets all the deadlines. With. That being said, we're kind of transitioning at this point to give a glimpse of some of the things that have been offered. In the program to date, both last year and this year. And forgive me if I'm missing any that I neglected to put, but. Tried to kind of capture some of the events and services. So for example, the tutoring services. Um, last year we had some open gym nights. Um, this year we've had some workshops. So different. Events and services that have been offered to support students with those two goals we mentioned at the beginning, which were both the cultural and the academic goals. In kind of refocusing on both of those, so the academic and the. The cultural, we have these questions and this is really the heart of the public hearing tonight. Is for those of you participating to be able to share with us. Your responses to these questions. And Eddie wrote those taking copious notes. So. We have a survey that we will provide as well in a Google forum for somebody who may not want to speak that, but we really value your actual voice. So if you want to unmute and share. Your responses to any of these questions and what that could look like for potential programming for us in the upcoming year, that would be fantastic. So I'm gonna mute and give people an opportunity to speak.
Are, are we still gonna try to get that mural project? Is that still a possibility? Because I think that that would. Help with the cultural identity and customs. Languages. I, I'm big on language. So I'm wondering if in the future we could provide some type of language workshops, even if it's teaching the local languages. That preservation and restoration is really important.
So two, two things in that, um, Jessica has a comment in the chat that I just wanted to add to that. Maria, I forgot, I neglected to put on the previous slide, the All Nations Craft Fair. I'm so sorry, Jessica. I don't know why I skipped on that. And thank you for your comments, Maria Lena. Albert, did you wanna, um, speak to that?
Oh, and the big time powwow last year, we did that. That was huge. I, um, yeah, they, we're, we're still, um, discussing the mural project. Uh, we, um, we have some homework that we're working on. Uh, in hopes to, um. Provide that in the summer program. And so stay tuned. I, I think we'll talk about it at our next meeting.
Thank you. And I think that's another big one too, is summer programming, um, in the future. As well, going forward, because we do have learning loss over the summer. So if there's ways that we can work on the learning loss as well as the cultural. And spiritual and customs, that would be awesome.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So hopefully next school year, we can get an earlier start. On, on programming. I know we had a, we had a pretty rough winter and, um, you know, some changes. That we had to adjust to, but, um, I think overall we did great.
Great ideas coming. Anybody, oops, I'm gonna go back up. Not there yet, Dan. Can't go back. It won't let me. Don't know why, this silly thing.
Try to click on the lower left corner and there may be a back arrow that shows up. You won't see it until you click on that.
You're genius, Albert. There we go. Okay. There we go. So here's the questions we're still working with. We've heard, I, so far I've heard. Um, summer programming. Language opportunities. Continuing to work on facilitating the real project. And then Mackenzie, you have your hand up.
Yeah, so I don't know if this is the, the right time to mention this, but I did send over information about the restoring. Um, natural native relationships program that we have here at Snack. And while it is not language focused, I wanted to definitely give room to have that conversation here. It is a program available at. That covers the expenses for, um, cultural trips throughout California. I have the flyer here. It is, uh, our youth summer outdoor trips through our restoring natural. Native relationships program and they are all expenses played, paid for youth ages thirteen and up. And it focuses on things like. Plant walks, gathering practices, star navigation, um, and more. And this is a flyer. I think Katrina, I sent you. And I also sent it today to, uh, Jessica and Alberto as well to have on hand. So this is open. Um, to youth that are thirteen and up to attend. Um, we cover all the costs. We do have single day trips as well as. Multi-day and overnight trips to really cover, um, some of these areas that you're talking about here.
I have a question. Does a student or, or youth have to be members of Snack to participate?
No, no, they just have to. We're looking for, um, thirteen and up, I think is the, uh, the requirement.
So they don't have to be a patient of Snack?
No, not for this.
Yeah, cool. I'd like a flyer.
And, and I do want to say that, um, we, we sent out the information. Uh, regarding the snack youth summer programs. Uh, because I, I met with, um, well, I tried it with, with Manny. And Luna. And Nathan at the Wilton Rancheria Community Barbecue this past Sunday. And I spoke with them and then they, they've shared with me the flyers. And so we sent it out to the. The students who has, who had self-identified as, as American Indian Alaska natives. So we sent that out to the group. Uh, two days ago on the twenty-fifth. And so we'll send another reminder. I, what I've noticed is families typically, when we send out the post notifications one way, but. There's a larger response when it comes to sending it via text. Is what I've seen as well. So we'll, we'll definitely be sending it out because I know one of your first trip is coming up this Saturday, right?
Yeah, so this Saturday is the land restoration, uh, gathering in Hollister, California. So it's my understanding that, um, Manny and Luna, they're leading this program. They'll all be meeting on Saturday, like at seven AM. Right at the snack parking lot. Um, they've rented a bus to take folks down to Hollister for art, for their first event. And there's still room open. I know Manny was making calls right before I left the office as well.
And, and I do appreciate Mackenzie, um, sharing that information. And one thing that I, when I was there at the Wilton Rancheria, they, they provided a lot of great ideas. Sort of like, uh, community building with barbecues and the spring, uh, Easter events. And they had it where they had. Just the introduction of both the education department there with, uh, Josh. Josh, Joshua and with, uh, Celeste. That was impressive, just the amount of families that were there present and the way they had. Created a way to inform families regarding the, 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 sort of the launch off of their education department and also. Ways that they could connect families in a way that families are eating together and, and. And they had, it was just a, it was a wonderful event and I think something that could definitely be replicated, uh, in the future, uh, for our families.
You know, one of the, one of the events we host out there at Wilton. Is the first Wednesday of every month. There is a family wellness meeting. And we invite. Whole family, you know, grandma, grandpa, mom, dad, children, um. To come and share a meal. And after we eat, you know, we open up in a good way after we eat. Then the women go with the women. And the youth, um, the young women, young girls. Um, the youth, they go with, um, a facilitator that facilitates. You know, a lesson for the youth and, you know, simultaneously the boys, the boys and the men with the men. And then they have space for the children, the little ones, little ones. And, um, the idea is that they come and all receive same lesson. And when they leave for the day. You know, of course, age appropriate, right? Uh, the lesson that they're, they're sharing that lesson when they get in the car to go home or while they're at home. And it's the first Wednesday of every month out at Wilton. Good stuff.
It's good stuff. Thank you, Mackenzie, for sharing. Thanks, Albert. We have. These questions. I'm hearing some great recommendations. This year we offered tutoring. I guess my questions would be what steps or actions can we take in supporting, um. Native American students in terms of increasing not just attendance. We saw the attendance numbers, which we had a really high chronic absenteeism rate. And then, um, really working with students academically to ensure. That they've met standards for reading, writing, and ultimately graduation. Any recommendations there that are? Different to Maria Lena?
Um, for attendance, I mean, attendance and graduation rates kind of go in hand, hand, right? But for attendance, I'm thinking. If we had more culturally relevant things for them to look forward to on their school calendars. Then maybe that would, um, increase their. You know, their desire to be in school because they're being seen in school. They're being recognized in school, not just in November, you know, um. And then as far as graduation rates go, I'm wondering if we can't team up with our local. Community college and, uh, CSU. With their, they have, uh, they have native, uh, clubs, native student clubs and. Creating some type of mentorship and, you know, maybe even providing some tutoring if possible. Um, you know. Uh, there's this really cool, I was out at the Davis Powwow and they had, I, actually I have the information to share with you all. They, uh, have this really cool math. That's indigenous-based. And I know that the district has math nights and they do swoon math nights, but. I've heard from parents of all walks that this is not something that they kind of get. Um, so I looked at some of the curriculum at the Powwow. And I think it would be really cool if the district hosted some of those events as well. And that could be open to the entire community, like some of our other cultural events have been. So they would get a math lesson and it's indigenous-centered.
Yeah, if you share those resources, that would be fantastic. Jessica.
Yeah, um, I wanted to. Mention with regards to the tutoring. I think. We could do a little streamlining. Take some creativity. You know how I am. But, um. Say, for instance, there was a child. That was on the SST radar. You know what I mean, Katrina? And they might, and we like, maybe even look at targeting maybe kids that, I mean, and maybe they're on a SAP radar. Maybe it's not. All the way to the SST. That might be actually a little too late. But like, I'm just wondering if we can look at. Maybe even kids that are at risk academically that might be. On our. You know, on our list. Um, on, of our native students that have identified themselves. And then we can. Um, try and streamline our support a little bit more because if you think about it, they're at the deepest need. I mean, ideally, like to hope that they're already getting services, but I, I don't know. You know what I mean? I, I feel like I don't. I, like, I don't have the data to look at. I know we may not have access to it, but. I guess. That's where I'm thinking. Like, if there's a way to somehow streamline into the kids that need it the most. Another idea too is, which, you know, and this might be a little convoluted sounding, but. Because again, it was a different, it was a smaller, um, population, but we would actually. In Placer County, they actually did a test. They would do an informal assessment called the RAT. And it would inform the tutor about what areas of need this student like truly had the most difficulty in. And so then they would provide tutoring based on those areas. And like, I, like, for instance, my son, he didn't qualify, which was really good because he didn't need, he didn't have any like academic deficits, but just to. Rule him out, they put him through the, the assessment. So these are just different ideas. I'm just putting it into this space, but. I don't know, like, if it would be more like working with the elementary school administrators about. Whether or not they know if there's any like native students in their population that. Might be having academic difficulty or, you know what I mean, or behavioral difficulty or whatever. I know that, well, we might not be to a behavioral difficulty perspective. I think we're just at an academic and educational support perspective, but. When I see behavioral, I think self-regulation. So where are they at on the scale of self-regulation and like, can they learn? Essentially, that's where I'm at. So.
Good point. Think looking at it and identifying, I think another big piece as we're talking about this is really. The communication with site administrators and site teams. Jessica, I think that's part of what you're bringing up in terms of. As students come on their radar, how we're supporting sites with knowing what some of the services in the community are. That they can specifically refer those students to as well, as well as the support we can provide, but.
Yeah. And I would, like, I would even love, like, a, a meeting where we. Like, I don't know, we have, we have so much on our plate already, but like, it, like some type of creative idea, like to invite the administrators to. A meeting where we, they can ask us questions maybe, or I don't know, we put on some little. Demo, like. Slides of what we do. So you know what I mean? So they, so even administrators know, so they know that they have a kiddo that's native in their school. I don't know. Maybe that's a little too far-fetched, but. Probably is.
Thank you. All good things. I think we can think of, look at all these and see what. Thank you. All good things. I think we can think of, look at all these and see what we're able to do and and of course, the summer next year. Albert's.
Um, I think those are all great ideas. I I I believe um that we we definitely have to think dynamically, like, how can we approach this from different pathways, you know, um from internally within this, the district. I think that's what Jessica was outlining there. Um, how do we reach, you know, educators and administrators and I I still believe there's a a large um population in the district that is unaware there is an Indian education program. I feel like we're just scratching the surface with that. And even in our outreach efforts, you know, we we could do so much more in our outreach efforts. I thought last year for me, because we started so late, the the big time powwow was a great way to outreach the community, right? And we we got a great response, but um I think um more efforts in in that area. I know when I, we were in Elk Grove, um we actually um set up and, you know, parents that were really actively involved. Um, that we we would set up with our liaison at school sites and table and we would reach out to certain, you know, either mostly high school or middle school. Um, because we wanted high schoolers and middle schoolers um on the pathway of graduation and even prepping for the next level. Uh, and so setting up um, you know, just info um. And and I love that you collect data, right, and are able to read transcripts and collect that information. That was so fruitful when you shared that with us. Because I thought if we had that at the beginning of the school year, that kind of information from the previous school year, we could, we could be reaching out and and I know that's a lot of man-hours and time. But um I I feel like um if we could host or even at community events that are already there, you know, we can promote that to our to our our students and then set up, set up tables. We can set up uh in in a booth, info booth at different events. I think we we could do a better job at that as well. So, um yeah, I think a dynamic approach is what's needed here.
Albert, I actually think some of what you're saying in turn, I think all of what you're saying, but there's pieces, so. This week I sent a message specifically to seniors because we had um zero seniors who had submitted the recognition form for spring gathering. It was all elementary. And I didn't understand why Eddie Bertho kept sharing out the information to everyone, getting nothing. So this week I just actually sent an email to all, I ran a query and got the email at the school email addresses for all seniors. And sent an email to them specifically with the link to the Google form with the title on the email saying we want to recognize you. And within minutes had four additional forms submitted. But with an email from a student prior to getting those four forms, I got an email from a student informing me the form was actually wrong. Which explained a lot to me. The senior one was taking them to the kindergarten responses because it was a conditional form and not a single parent who opened that form had emailed us to tell us that, right? Not a single parent had reached out and said, I think your form is wrong. I can't submit for my senior. But a senior reached out to me and said the form is wrong. So we were able to correct it and within minutes I got those four additional responses. So I didn't send it to the other grade levels because I don't know much they check their emails, but I thought seniors check their emails. I'm gonna send it to them. So I think starting on our campuses with you know our students and how we're engaging our students, I think it will bring in the parents and raise awareness a little bit, so. Potentially being able to plan some events during school days in the fall where we can go in and actually outreach to students on campuses. Would be fantastic.
I want to share one idea. Um, and I think this is powerful because as we're, we we want to develop youth leaders uh is that in Elk Grove for the first time in the history of that district, there is a Native American Student Club at Laguna Creek High School. Native American Student Club and it's led by one of our, you know, our our youth leaders. Um, here in uh Sacramento. I know her personally and as a result of that club. Yeah, she has really sparked an interest in the students in that school. Um, to participate, to learn more about who they are. There's a lot of kids, they identify as native, but they've never been raised culturally. But they know they're native, but they maybe identify more as Latino or or Caucasian. Or African-American and so she, um, this young lady, she's amazing. So in Twin Rivers Unified, you know, when we um recruit a young native student. I'm gonna encourage that person to think about and maybe support them in developing a a Native American Student Club on their campus.
That would be great. Any other ideas? Things that we can start to process over the summer and work towards for next year?
We got it. Some of this is community school stuff, straight up. Also, Katrina. Which is a big initiative through the state, like, I mean, because some of this is like a needs assessment. We have to do needs assessment on some of it, which I know we can look at, but like how can we increase attendance? Well, I don't know. Do they have a vehicle? I'm not sure exactly. You know what I mean? It's so individualized, but I think that I definitely think that you can see some community schools support, hopefully, or at least alignment with some community schools' goals or steering committee, what they're gonna be looking at. You know, and I I don't know all the different workings right off the top of my head, but I wanted to throw that in there.
Um, I think in the next few weeks, I'm gonna be getting more information on community schools because I think we're gonna be working on that our department in the fall, but we do have a two-year planning grant. Um but it's my understanding currently that the determination was made um to focus on one specific vertical articulation network. And so I think at this point, all of the steering committee members are members of that one vertical articulation network, not district-wide. So.
That's fine. I just kind of, when I'm reading through it, I'm
Yeah, no, community schools I think are huge and a lot of districts are doing community schools in terms of like it's spreading wider and I think you're right. The feedback, the needs assessment, the surveys, I think all of those are really important and can be used as tools to identify need.
Yes.
And we do have a needs assessment survey here, so it's in the, in the the beginning of this, I shared the link for the needs assessment. I'm gonna cut and paste again real quick. So those of you who jumped on later. I have the link. There's one link and there's a presentation link and then the needs assessment link. I'll put here. So you should have access to that and and we'll share this out also to our families um so that anybody not participating tonight can also provide input. Um but I think these are really important ideas and I think they're things that we can continue to meet on in the summer and start looking at. For next year. Some of our important dates and upcoming events are on here as well. So we do have our spring gathering and student recognition is right around the corner. May eleventh. Um, and we have our website on here. All the information and flyers are posted on the website. They've also been shared out with our families. We have the powwow. May twentieth, information is also on the website. We do have tutoring available, so we still have tutoring available to families. That information Eddie Bertho shared out, what was that? Eight, ten days ago. Um um regarding, we did get some additional funding from special projects to continue the tutoring because we had some parents requesting that that continue. So we're there and then we um have our public hearing survey, which we are going to keep open. The needs assessment will send it out. We will keep open to um April thirtieth. Any um questions on the upcoming events? That's all I had in terms of presentation. I'm gonna stop sharing.